We are back from executive session at nine fifty six P M where we discuss personnel and contracts. I need a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Mrs. Marissa Lowe effective no more than sixty days from the date of resignation and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
With regret.
So not opposed?
Not opposed.
Okay, extensions, motion carries. I need a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Mrs. Dinah Crockett effective no more than sixty days from the date of resignation and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position. No move. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. Need a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Ms. Alexis Daley effective August fourteenth, twenty twenty four and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. Need a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Ms. Catherine Deacon, excuse me, effective September tenth, twenty twenty four and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position. No move. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions.
This is a huge loss for the district now, huge loss.
Not an extension, no. Okay. Well, I just want to be clear since we were in the middle of the vote, so, um, motion carries. Need a motion to approve Leah Augustine as Joe Walker Elementary School principal per the terms and conditions of the McGuffey School District Compensation Plan for school administrators, supervisors at a salary of seventy seven thousand nine hundred and thirty eight dollars prorated for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for her current position. No move. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries.
I'd like to welcome Leah, just a few words. Leah, as you know, has been in our district for well over a year. Her place is firmly cemented at the middle school, especially with a lot of initiatives that she took on from the P value S to our assessments of our students. She has made it a point in her short time here to make sure that she has an open door policy for her staff and her students feel very comfortable around her. She's a visible presence at all parts of the building and I expect nothing less than her time doing the same things at Joe Walker. So her first official day at Joe Walker as their principal is going to be this coming Monday. So with that, Leah Augustine.
Thank you. I want to first thank Dr. Oberg and our board for giving me this opportunity to extend my career down to Joe Walker and add them to my McGuffey family. And I'm saying add because I'm not leaving the middle school. I, if I could, I would stay with the staff forever. Dr. Welk and our admin team behind me that I work with every day are amazing and we have a great thing going here. So I am very excited to go to Joe Walker and add to my family. And I'm looking forward to working with that community and staff and teachers and students there and becoming a part of that family better. But I do don't want to go without saying thank you to our middle school staff and teachers. They have been amazing and learned and grew with me as I came. Thank you.
Thank you. Need a motion to hire Rachel Huey as school psychologist at Masters plus thirty step two prorated subject to assignment per the terms and conditions of the current M E A agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams and Act one sixty eight verifications. No move. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. Need a motion to hire Mason Anderson as a special education teacher at bachelor's step one prorated subject to assignment and per the terms and conditions of the current M E A agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams and Act one sixty eight verifications. No move. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. I forgot to, I was going to go back for a minute for the school psychologist. Congratulations to Rachel Huey, she's not here, but still, welcome to her, in case she's watching or whatever. And then motion carries for Mason Anderson and she also is not with us, correct? But welcome to her as well. Did you have anything you wanted to say?
So with our school psychologist, Rachel Huey, we're very excited to bring her on board. She's a Cal U graduate. She lives in California as well. She has experience as a contracted school psychologist in many local school districts, including Beth Center, Brentwood, Avella, and she's actually sold into McGuffey before. So we're very excited to welcome her to the team. She will play a pivotal role for us, especially in special services. So again, Rachel Huey, we're excited to have you. Mason Anderson will be our special education K one teacher at Claysville Elementary. She comes to us with experience from California Cyber Charter School as well as different pre-K programs. So she has a good background in pre-K as well as special education. So this is another exciting hire for our school district and we can't wait for her to get started. Mason Anderson. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to hire Samantha Bonus as a long-term substitute at bachelor's step one prorated subject to assignment and per the terms and conditions of the current M E A agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams and one Act sixty eight, Act one sixty eight verifications. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. Him welcomed, well, she's here. She's not here tonight, but in the district, so congratulations on the new position. Did anybody have anything to say there? I don't know either for, yeah, I don't either. That's why I kind of lied.
So again, Sam Bonus has been with McGuffey School District. She has served in the capacity of a building substitute at the middle school as well as a daily sub. She's going to be working with us closely as she pursues her master's in special education and she will be on a long-term role with the fifth grade position at Claysville Elementary. So we're very excited to have Sam.
Thank you. I need a motion to hire Megan McClung as an elementary teacher at bachelor's step one prorated subject to assignment and per the terms and conditions of the current M E A agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams and Act one sixty eight verifications. No move. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. I'll introduce, uh, Megan.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Oberg, President Jackson, Vice President Liebhardt, members of the board, esteemed colleagues and guests. I have the pleasure of introducing Megan McClung, who will serve as our fourth grade math and science teacher. She is a graduate of Fairmont State University. She has been a teacher, a fourth grade teacher for the last three years at St. Francis Central Catholic in Morgantown. And when I called her current principal, Artie Moore, he said, he said that we were extremely lucky to get her and he, I'm going to quote him here, that she is a diamond. So, you know, that just echoed everything that everybody who sat on that committee thought as well about her. So we're really excited to get her here.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. I forgot to mention, we are removing items K seven and K twelve from the agenda. I apologize for not announcing that sooner. I need a motion to hire Kara Bailey as an elementary teacher at bachelor's step two prorated subject to assignment and per the terms and conditions of the current M E A agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams and Act one sixty eight verifications. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries.
All right, and Kara was here, she stayed till about nine thirty. So I was not sure how long it would last, so I didn't want to make her stay too, too long. But it's my pleasure to introduce her as well. She will be our second grade teacher and she's coming to our school with experience as an elementary teacher and a reading tutor in both Ohio and Indiana. Her personality is very bright. I wish you would have gotten a chance for everybody to meet her this evening. She is a graduate of Clark Summit University and she's currently working on her reading specialist certificate. So she has a strong background in reading and she has a passion for it, which will definitely benefit us in the primary grade levels. We're excited to have her here and I called her references and three principals gave me glowing reviews. So I know that she's a great hire as well. So I thank you for hiring her and I look forward for her starting here soon. Thank you.
Need a motion to approve the administrative internship for Mr. Patrick Baker at Claysville Elementary School during the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. No move. Second. All those in favor say aye. Oh, sorry.
How long is the internship? Over the course?
A semester.
A semester?
Well, yeah, and he could go, I mean, it depends, he needs to get sixty hours.
Okay.
His parents, Joe and Maureen Baker, are residents here, they live in Taylorstown, I believe. I'm not sure their exact address, but they're local people, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Here. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the attached list of school bus or van drivers for G G and C for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year, pending receipt of all required clearances as presented. No move. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. Need a motion to approve Gary Koscheck and Corey Collins as drivers for first student for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year, pending receipt of all required clearances as presented.
No move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the list below for placement of twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five substitute cafeteria list retroactive to August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. No move. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. I need a motion to. I did cafeteria, we just saw.
Yeah.
No, they're down. I have cafeteria, then teachers, then substitute para educator and secretary. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was just going by what was on the screen. Okay, I just did, we just did cafeteria, so on board docs, the next thing is, I need a motion to approve the list of substitute teachers retroactive to August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four for the place, for placement on the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five substitute teacher list. No move. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five substitute para educator secretary list retroactive to August twenty two, twenty twenty four as presented. No move. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. Need a motion to approve Michael Burry as an assistant girls soccer coach at C one fifty percent for the twenty twenty four fall season as per the M E A agreement in the event of a partial season salary will be prorated. No move. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. Need a motion to approve oil and gas lease agreement with Range Resources to include seventeen point seven 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 one acres located in Buffalo Township. No move. All those in fa, I mean, any discussion or questions?
Thank you for everybody that worked on that.
Yep.
Good, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Leager.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the agreement between McGuffey School District and the Hope Learning Center for Special Education Services for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year to include occupational therapy at seventy dollars, seventy five dollars per hour and speech and language therapy at five hundred and fifty dollars per day.
No move.
Second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the price renewal contract with N R G Direct Energy for the term of September first, twenty twenty five to August thirty first, twenty twenty eight, pending review by the district solicitor. No move. Second. Any discussion or questions?
I had a question written down and I don't know where it is now, but does the, not even on the right one, no, I started, sorry, started looking for my question. Is the zero point two six seven, did that change at all or is that set for the life of that contract?
This is minus.
It's a minus.
Minus oh point two six seven, so that means it's less than.
Yes, yes, and that is for the life of this contract, yes. And it's actually a little better rate than what our last year contract. Okay, okay, perfect, thank you.
Do we have any ideas of our projection what it might save the district?
I don't.
That's right, thank you. Not right up top. That's a hard question.
That was all for me, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five transportation contract with Malacher LLC as submitted. No move. I always feel like I pronounce that wrong. Malacher. Because I always do pronounce it wrong, let me see what. Any questions or discussion there?
What, may I ask what Watson Institute Education Center?
It's a private transportation provider, they provide transitional services to our students.
So this would be a requirement of a, for a special education student to be transported there.
That's something that we can't do here.
Correct. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries.
Madam President, if I could ask a question about number three, do we know the negotiator that forced?
Wait a second, number, the N R G? Yeah.
N R G.
That was a consortium that was done a number of years ago, so I don't know who particularly negotiated with that one.
I thought one of the administrators. All right, thank you.
Okay, we are currently on L five. I need a motion to approve replacing the speakers and amplifiers in the stadium from falling music in Morgantown, West Virginia for a total price of nineteen thousand six hundred and fifty eight dollars and ninety eight cents to be paid from fund thirty nine, that's a bond fund.
No move.
Second, questions or discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. I need a motion to hire Wind Water Controls LLC to provide controllers and the necessary computer programming for rooftop units one, two, and five to enable them to perform dehumid, dehumidification, too late for that word, for a total cost of eight thousand eight hundred dollars as presented to be paid for through, paid for through the capital improvement fund.
No move.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. I need a motion to approve replacing two coolers for the cafeteria, cafeterias at a total cost of fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty seven dollars and eighty six cents from Katam Restaurant Supply Inc. to be paid for from fund thirty nine, that's a bond fund.
No move.
Second, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the agreement for Title One on Public School Services between McGuffey School District and Intermediate Unit One for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. No move. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, sorry, did you, did you have questions? Oh, okay, I'm going to go back then, I'm sorry, you said you had a question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the adult breakfast and lunch prices in accordance with the National School Lunch Paid Equity requirements. No move. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. Need a motion to approve payment to Anderson Price for the invoice dated July thirty first, twenty twenty four in the amount of four thousand five hundred and sixty dollars as submitted. No move. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. Need a motion to approve payment to Anderson Price for invoice dated August thirty first, twenty twenty four in the amount of five thousand seven hundred dollars as submitted. No move. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement between the Bejata Home Healthcare, Inc. and McGuffey School District for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year to provide services for an individual student paid by the family's medical insurance.
No move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement between Bejata Home Healthcare, Inc. and McGuffey School District for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year.
No move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. M one, this is the third reading for the policy two forty nine bullying, cyberbullying. We have the new complaint form that is there. I need a motion to accept and then a second and then we can discuss, right? That's correct?
Yes.
Yes. A motion. Second. All right, so we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I mean, I looked at it, it looked okay to me, I see they have passed the form, but I'm just asking.
The policy doesn't include verbiage that would guide parents to the form like I had wanted, but the form, the new form is there. And I do appreciate what administration is, is doing and committing to do with that. So I mean, it's not a hundred percent, but we're moving forward with something, so, thank you. But I don't know if that's what everybody else wanted, so, can only speak for myself.
Anyone else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Um, opposite, or, uh, app, extensions, sorry. Motion carries. This is the first reading for policy zero zero six. So because it's the first reading, we now have the next month to read over that, get any questions or comments to board leadership. And then we'll look at that for next month.
I know it's a jest, if there is, please slip that ticket so I can have it for the October committee.
Correct. So we would present at the October committee meeting, any questions or, or if people have changed, possibly, you know, suggested changes or whatever at committee meeting before the second reading.
Can I provide you what I have already?
Um, if you just send it to him or to us.
Send it here for the board to see, or here.
Well, isn't it what you sent to the board previously? Through email?
I've asked to have it on here, but I've not provided everything.
You've sent an email to the entire board and asked them to review and consider the changes that you wanted.
There's, there's, I mean, that was a work in progress, but I wanted the policy on the agenda so that we could discuss it and, I guess, if you want to wait till next month, it could, but I'm just, I just thought this was here so that we could do that.
Typically, you do the first reading, if you give everybody the month to, to read through it and then you come back for discussion, but it doesn't matter to me, whatever you guys want to do.
Would anybody be opposed to me sending what my thoughts are on this? Okay, thank you. Um, so why I wanted this policy brought up for review, um, I, I have gone through it, um, and just from my personal experience, but there's somebody looking in from the outside in and somebody working from the inside. with somebody looking from the outside in and somebody working from the inside. Um, as a board member, um, there are some things that I would like to change of the policy. I would like for the policy to, um, um, include verbiage that allows more time for policy committee and agenda items to be reviewed. I don't know what that timeframe would look like. I would like to see one to three months, possibly, if it's even possible. Anything that we could review earlier, be done so. We need to allow ample time for the public to view some of the, some of the, um, things that we get presented to us, especially in committee. One of, one of the things that, that I've heard from the community is, you know, the committee presents, and on that night we're expected to vote, but there really wasn't anything else provided to them prior to the committee. And none of that information is made public until they're seeing it here. Um, we have a lot of people that watch from home remotely, and that board isn't visible to them very clearly most of the time. So they don't get to see what, what is actually being presented. The, um, the, um, the policy should include that the public would be provided with um, the paper copy of what, of what the board gets in reference to the committee information. They get the agenda. When there's something being, being presented, they should have the ability to have a paper copy of that as well so that they can develop their questions and their thoughts on the program or whatever it is being presented to us. Public participation, currently we have two public comment sections of our agenda. The first is agenda only, and the last is agenda and non-agenda. Both sections should, should allow both agenda and non-agenda um, out of respect for time for, um, public and, and for ours. If they have the ability to speak sooner rather than later, I think that would be beneficial to them and to us. Our policy should have an addition added regarding setting the agenda. We should have a policy that if three or more board of directors request an item to be listed on the agenda, it will be listed on the agenda for the next meeting. An exception would be if the agenda was, um, has been filled with other time-sensitive items that would take precedence, such, such as the budget. And/or items meetings submitted by a certain date or time with a vote required to do so. Additionally, any board member can request an item, obviously, to be added at any time. But once it's requested, it should be added as early as the next meeting or no later than three months later, unless it's agreed upon by the board of director that requested the agenda item to wait longer. Bouncing back to public participation a little bit, um, we have a, a, um, First Amendment concern of mine. First Amendment by a violation, by unconstitutionally restricting the public from making negative comments about an individual or a group of individuals. As per First Amendment law, a valid time and place and manner regulation must be justified without reference to the content of the regulated speech. There was, um, some case law that, that I came across in, in my own personal research. Obviously, the solicitor can review this as we move forward with this process. But it was Ward versus Rock, um, against racism, nineteen eighty-nine. There was a three-prong test that was outlined. One was regulation must be content neutral. Two, it must be narrowly tailored to serve a significant governmental interest. And three, it must leave open ample alternative channels for communicating the speaker's message. Additionally, as per Pennsylvania Open Meetings Law, AKA the Sunshine Act, the district can limit the time one is allowed to speak and, and to limit the comment period to taxpayers and residents of the district. But nothing is, um, nothing is said about restricting what one, one is permitted to say. Furthermore, Pennsbury School District settled a lawsuit after the U S District Court's ruled that the policy modeled after a template from P S B A is not to be enforced as it prohibits personally-directed or offensive speech. The court also wrote, "While this court does not address the school board's or its employees' assessments of whether the speech was offensive or to whom, suffice it say that the First Amendment protects offensive speakers." Lastly, on our website, under the School Board Meeting subsection, there is verbiage written under the public participation meetings, um, part there that states commentary should be addressed to the board as a whole, not to individual staff members, board members, superintendent, nor the audience. This verbiage should be removed as we move forward with the process. And finally, the parliamentary authority. Um, our policy quotes Robert's Rule of Orders, newly revised will be followed, but not adopted. Um, there's a hyperlink on that policy that takes you to nineteen forty-nine Act Fourteen, section four oh seven, that states the rules and regulations. Each board of school directors may adopt reasonable rules and regulations for its government and control. I would like to see added to our agenda for agenda topics, unfinished business, business and general order, allowing important matters and/or unfinished business to come before the, the board. And new business, allowing all board members to raise notions, add topics, and/or ideas. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Was this the last one that we just did, which we have two readings, and then we voted, was that the other? I mean, I, I don't know that we can, we can't debate something for six months.
No, 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 not that. Um, and that's why I bring up possibly a longer timeframe. I don't know what would work best for us. I would say yes, and I believe we have a policy. I don't know which one it is. I meant to review it before I came in tonight and didn't have time. Well, but there's a policy that states, for instance, with our policy, there should be a first reading, second reading, and then vote on the third. Yeah. But I believe that would be helpful for anything else that would fit that criteria to be able to do so.
You're welcome. So again, I will just ask that you send that to board leadership. We'll get that out to the rest of the board. Um, and if anybody has anything else, um, to submit it to us as well. Policy eight two seven is also there for a first reading. So again, please peruse that over the next month. And if you have questions or any, anything, um, please reach out to the board leadership. The budget expenditure report for the months of July and August twenty twenty four are presented for your review. The P Card spending report for the month of August twenty twenty four is presented for your review. Is there a solicitor's report?
No, there's no report, I'm present.
Is there a Western Area Career Technology Center report?
No, we do not have one this week.
Is there a P S B A, Pennsylvania School Board Association report?
There's only a couple of things. One thing, October sixth to eighth, if you want to go to the Poconos, you can go because they are having a school leadership conference, and they wanted to make sure that we were all aware of that. Also, and this was kind of interesting, there's going to be a student showcase livestreamed on October sixth. Now, that's a Sunday, and it's at six o'clock in the evening. But you can, if you're interested in doing it, you can watch it. It's students being highlighted. And of course, they're inviting you to participate, you know, and watch this livestream. So if you're interested in doing that, that is on their website, and you can go and register for that. You do have to pre-register if you're going to be, uh, if you're going to livestream it. Again, that would be October the sixth, a Sunday evening. Uh, there's also a request that, and it's asking all of anyone in the district to submit your student success stories. There are, under the Great Schools of Pennsylvania, I actually mentioned this last year when they had winning people. And I'm going, that's great, I know, we have some great people. We should really think about that. Uh, we have people get up all the time, and they're talking about all these great things that the kids are doing. You can submit it, and then it might be a part of that great school in the area. And I think that's something we should be considering. Also, reminder, you know, we're coming to the end of the year here, and you need to do the updated director training. Anybody have any questions there for anything? That's really all there is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, public, um, comments on agenda or non-agenda items?
Madam President, we have one. Casey McFarland, South Franklin Township.
Thanks for sticking around for us.
Yeah.
Did you say South Franklin? I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate everyone giving me some time at the end of this long night to talk. My name is Casey McFarland. I have a second grader and a pre-care at Joe Walker. So I'm generally new to this and, um, you know, having school-aged kids, but also coming to a school board meeting. Um, I do appreciate the consideration that all of you put into each of the points that were brought up tonight. And, um, just have a few that I want to bring up because amongst parents, I'm sure that there's rumors and talk and everything else that comes along. I don't know what all is real, what all is not. So please don't take my words verbatim, but there are concerns that have been brought up to myself that I think would be important to talk about. So first and foremost, I would like to make a point about all of the resignations that were talked about today. I know that I'm new, generally speaking, to this district, but that is kind of disappointing to hear that there were so many. And a few of the names I do recognize from Joe Walker. So, um, as, as a parent, that can be a little concerning to see, especially all of them occurring at the same timeframe. Next, uh, concern that has been brought to my attention is the possibility of taking away the Scholastic Book Fairs. I don't know how true this is or voting down. I don't know how any of this works, but I would just really like it to be known that the influence that that has on kids, the, it, it may be the only time that kid gets a book for the whole year. If somebody can afford to get books. If, if maybe they don't have the access to have transportation to get to a bookstore or library, something like that. Again, that may not be an issue at all, but if it's something I'm hearing, it's something I'd like to speak on. The next two are probably more of the hot topics. So, uh, first off, there's speak of possible, um, interaction with a group that's called Moms for Liberty. And that's concerning to myself, not because of my political affiliation or beliefs in any way, but just the fact that that's a political group at all. Because we are a public school. So to have an affiliation with a group like that concerns me. I don't think that there should be an affiliation with any group. Again, I don't know the truth to this. I don't know how far it goes. But I would like to remind us that we are a public school, and we need to be able to create a space that is welcoming to everybody, regardless of their political affiliation. Lastly, it, another hot topic, um, religion. So this has absolutely nothing to do with my beliefs or what I do spiritually, religiously, anything like that. Again, I don't want this to be taken as an individual stance, but just a concern for the general public because we are a public school. I was, uh, put off a bit that we had a prayer for this meeting. I'm not against anybody involving prayer in their own lives, but because this is a public school, I don't believe it's a place for it. I'm one hundred percent in support of the Bible groups, you know, having leave to be able to go and do that, to have the middle school or high school group. Um, I know there was a gentleman who spoke about that earlier. Absolutely, please do that. I think that should be available for people. But not everybody in this district is going to identify themselves as a Christian. So to involve that in a school board meeting was concerning to myself. More so in the fact of it's not causing any act of harm, but in the idea of that things can snowball. So if we start doing this, what does that then lead to? I just want to have that inclusivity for everybody because if we're having a Christian prayer, should we have a prayer for every belief system out there? If, if we need the involvement of Christianity or any religion in a school, then we have those opportunities to send our kids to private schools and do those things. Honestly, to have God encouraging a hand in the votes or notions that are happening here, that concerns me too. Because if morality is only being pulled from a religious stance, that's not where we should be pulling it from. Our morals should be from ourselves internally as an individual. We shouldn't have to put our best votes forward for the general public just because we're aligning with a religion. It's just because we want to be good people, and we want to offer good things for everybody to benefit from. So truly, that's where I come from with that. And I truly, truly hope that we remember the fact that it's a public school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming.
Madam President, that concludes public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. No move. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Meeting is adjourned at ten thirty-six P M.